Well, yeah, I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America. To the people of the United States, one nation under God. There's nothing supposed to be wrong.
Justice.
Uh, all members present, regular meeting, the board. Um, I have some comments which, um, um, I, I was contacted, uh, I have a letter here from, well, anyway, I'm gonna address some comments, um, but, uh, I'll leave right now for the moment. I'm gonna pass the torch around on the last. Scott, you know, I might, the information seems to be out there that on the 30th, which is this Friday, we'll, we'll celebrate the installation of, of lights at our high school with, and all the support that was overwhelmingly granted by many, many, many people in this community. So we're very excited. You know, I think there's just so many points that you can, you can touch upon about a community, uh, event, a community project, and this was one of those, and it's, it's an asset to the community, is economic development. It's great for the youth and, uh, it's something to look forward to in the future. So we're very excited. Look forward to seeing everyone Friday night. Can't wait. We did send 300 letters out, so if you didn't get a letter, call me, we'll get you and make sure you get it. If you didn't get a letter, you're invited. That's right. It's too late.
I've been photocopying it, Scott, and handing it out to people, so.
Hey, Matt?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, what do you got?
Uh, I was, I think you probably addressed this a little bit, Carl, but I was excited to see that we got the, uh, $500,000 STEAP grant. And, um, and then I had, the other thing that I think you'll probably address, I had emailed both you and Scott asking if we could have a conversation about the employee letter that was in the Harbor News so that we could get updated on that.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay, so why don't we start there? Um, so I don't think any of this is gonna be confidential information because it, uh, we, we had a town employee, uh, that's past tense. Uh, her name was Ellen O'Hurley. She worked 30 hours in the building office. Um, due to, uh, family medical leave act, uh, incident, um, she was out for, she asked for 12 weeks, and she was entitled to 12 weeks, obviously. Uh, and when you take 12 weeks, you can use your paid time off, which she did, so she was paid during that time. Uh, her return to work date, uh, there was a little bit of confusion on that, was actually August 17th, which I think was a Wednesday. Um, and, um, I heard from the union, I believe, I wanna say for the first time on August 15th. Um, I did hear from Ellen on, I think, Friday saying, or maybe Monday morning, I can't remember which, saying, "I'm going to take a sick day Monday," her first day back. As it turns out, that wasn't her first day back, the 17th should have been her first day back. So how that shook out, that didn't result in any, uh, decision-making, because it was quickly realized on our part that there was confusion about the date. You know, the fact that, quite frankly, if someone didn't show up on their first day and they came in the next day and said, "Oh, there was confusion over," I mean, they're obviously gonna still have a job. Um, so the union, uh, through Tricia Johnson, um, initially requested that Ellen be allowed to work 22 hours in the building office while she, uh, handled her personal life, uh, matter, which involved her family member. Um, in speaking with the building official, he was quite clear. He had 30 hours a week of help over the course of the last 12 weeks. Uh, he was very satisfied, and he said to me, Tom McWhicky, and I told Tom, his name was gonna come up. Tom said, "Carl, it would be extremely disruptive to my office to bring in someone for 22 hours and backfill the other eight hours, especially the way we've been doing business." Unfortunately, in the email to the union, I wrote that Mr. McWhicky was, um, realizing that with his new employee, she was a little bit more computer proficient, and he felt like the workflow was better. Um, and I said that to, and unfortunately, it's in the emails, but the emails are public documents. So I did, uh, say that, it was based off what Mr. McWhicky said to me. Um, I'm not throwing Tom under the bus, this is what happened in town hall. So, uh, I said to the union, "There is a 20-hour-a-week position, not 22. There is a 20-hour-a-week position that we never fill in the selectmen's office." Um, that was Jennifer Donahue was doing part of that job. And when she left, Leanne and I said, "We tried one or two other people, they didn't work out." Uh, so we kinda kept the position open. "We probably need some help, but we haven't hired anybody yet, so we're just kinda waiting right now." We weren't gonna fill it. I offered it to Ms. O'Hurley. Because of her situation, I said to the union, "We can offer her 20 hours a week, same level of pay, same pay grade, no change." Ellen was not getting benefits through, she was not getting help benefits through the town, so no change there. Um, two hours less than what she requested, in a different department. That was understandable, we would have worked with her clearly, she would have done some work with Leanne. She would have, uh, dealt with the public like she does upstairs, uh, in my office or in the select, in the administration suite. I never heard back from anybody. I never heard back from the union, uh, only that she was considering the offer. That's it. She then, that union then said, "Hey, we have a sick bank here where employees who don't use all their sick time can bank it." And they can, the last person who used it extensively was Vicky Duffy. Uh, that is available. Um, I sought counsel on that, professional, uh, legal counsel, uh, our labor council. Uh, the sick bank is for the employee, it's not like an FMLA type of thing. It is for the employee, it's clear. The union wrote back and said, "While we don't necessarily agree with that interpretation, would you consider a leave of absence for this employee?" Union employees can take a leave of absence for up to one year, one year, and come back at their same job in the building office. My response, absolutely, I, I don't know, that wasn't exactly it. My response was, "Yes, I will," and I would have, there's no question, that would have been granted. In fact, I'll reveal, I said to Pat McHale, I assumed the recommendation would be to grant, he said, "Absolutely." So, I mean, I wanna make sure I'm acting entirely within, uh, the bounds of not only what's practical, but what is allowed per the contract. Absolutely. So she could come back, I said to the union, "Please let me know the duration of her leave of absence." That was the last communication I had with anybody. I don't know what else to do. And then there's a letter to the editor, which, by the way, I have a letter to the Harbor News going in today, spelling out exactly that. "I wish no ill will on this family that is going through, uh, a medical incident at all." Um, I felt like we made a very reasonable accommodation, uh, from a town hall operations perspective, and followed the union contract, which, by the way, uh, I received a letter today from Liz Swenson. I, I received it today, uh, being very disappointed about the fact that, um, in response to the letter, I don't wanna get into any details of any medical, um, but it was in response to the letter saying, and she wrote, "While, of course, I don't know the whole story," which, of course, she doesn't. And then it says, "I imagine that Carl was just following the contract." Well, listen, I negotiate these contracts, these contracts are very employee-friendly. The sick bank, we have another employee who is applying for sick bank use due to a medical incident. And that employee will probably get 50 days of sick bank leave. And, and that's great, uh, that employee will be able to come back, hopefully, fully healthy. Um, but then she writes, "But of course, contracts can be amended and revised in the face of new information and situations." Absolutely not, they cannot be, not a collective bargaining agreement. Um, a schedule can be modified, absolutely, a schedule can be modified. I offered Ms. O'Hurley a modified schedule. Um, and then she references the sick bank, which I've already covered. And then she says, "Perhaps she will need to take some unpaid time off." Exactly my thoughts. I offered her unpaid time off. So, uh, you know, I understand that it, it, I think it's, it, it's an unfortunate situation, I'm not gonna editorialize on it. However, uh, I feel the town, um, and I'll say I handled it, uh, appropriately, and, and I handled it with respect for what Ms. O'Hurley is going through. Um, that is, of course, my opinion. Um, and I can be criticized for that, and I am being criticized for it a little bit. Um, but we're talking two hours difference between what she requested and what we offered. And all I got back was, "She's considering it." And then we offered a year, leave of, up to a year leave of absence, and I got no response. So, um, at this point, um, that's where we are.
So.
Yeah.
No, thank, thank you for all that, that's helpful perspective, because I wanted to hear what happened from the town's perspective and not just the Harbor News, and there are a lot of people that ask me, you know, if I knew. Um, so I guess, when, when did we, then, we didn't hear anything back, when did we say, "You are terminated as an employee," and have we, and then have we heard anything since we've said that, other than the Harbor News?
No, nothing further. Uh, we've, uh, indicated to the employee that, um, since we didn't hear back, we assumed there's, she doesn't want the job anymore. Uh, I mean, so we have filled that position in the building office with a permanent employee at this point, um, who is, obviously, Tom needs that. Uh, so yes, uh, you know, this is a former employee at this point.
Okay.
It's a former employee. Um, you know, the crazy thing is, the 20-hour-a-week position keeps her in the union and allows her, as her personal life improves, hopefully, to apply for more hours. 22 hours, 25 hours, 30 hours, 35 hours, 40 hours, full-time job with benefits, if you stay in the union. And none of that happened. So, um, yeah, that's, I, to be honest with you, am a little bit baffled. Baffled by the way this went down. Uh, and that's all I can say, because I was communicating with the union immediately on all these issues. So, and I check my junk mail, by the way, every day. So, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and, uh, yeah, the STEAP grant, we received the STEAP grant, um, which is great, now we just have to have it administered by the state. Uh, so the good news is, the same person who is handling the administer, the legislative earmark for the $770,000 award that we received is also handling the, uh, no, the same person who's handling the other $500,000 earmark that we got for the area between the police station and the pickleball courts is also handling this STEAP grant. So, they, the state is kind of like in a hold-your-horses mode, okay? In the meantime, we are moving forward, Jeff Jacobson's office has, uh, ordered the survey, the whole property has to be surveyed, uh, wherever there are not sidewalks, uh, we already have inland wetlands approval on it. Um, I will be asking the Board of Finance at a meeting coming up soon to segregate the match funds, uh, that were required in the STEAP grant. Those match funds are, are an accumulation of what we promised to match both on the STEAP grant and on the legislative earmark, because we pledged a match. So, um, so that's good, uh, so that will move along, we are, we are ordering work done, it's engineering work, so we pay for it. You cannot move forward on, the state is very clear, do not do any work, uh, on the STEAP grant until you've had a, an agreement with the state. But we're doing work that we have to pay for anyway. Um, I have a couple other things, I was, uh, for the first time in my life, in Prospect, Connecticut today, at a, an in-person CCM meeting and Board of Directors meeting that followed. Um, and I just thought I'd mention, uh, to this board, what the, uh, policy, the legislative objectives that were, uh, created by the, there are five committees that CCM has. Education, appropriations, taxes, and finance is one. Um, and one of the legislative considerations that will be put forward to the membership is to increase funding for local education, addressing a paraprofessional shortage. Which I wasn't aware of, but apparently there's a paraprofessional shortage. Oh, boy. Um, um, increase, uh, payment in lieu of taxes reimbursement to municipalities. We've been talking about that for 20 years, pilot reimbursement to municipalities. So those were the two recommendations with regard to the Education Appropriation Taxes and Finance Committee. The Environmental Management and Energy Committee, uh, called for extended producer responsibility to be passed by the legislature this year, which would help with managing solid waste. They asked for money on the removal of dead or infested trees, which is a huge issue statewide between the beach leaf disease and the, um, aspor, all the ash trees are gonna die. And they also asked for a removal of the virtual net metering cap, um, which would allow the owner of the system to share any excess credits virtually with other accounts. Um, right now, there's a cap on virtual net metering. These are just recommendations at this point, they're not adopted. Uh, the Land Use Committee, Land Use, Transportation, Infrastructure, and Economic Development, um, basically made a, uh, transit-oriented development recommendation. This was very controversial. I don't know if Matt, you, I don't know, and Scott, I don't know if you remember, last year, um, there was, uh, legislation that was proposed, um, that would have allowed TOD housing as of right within, I think, a quarter mile or a half mile of any train station, uh, in the state of Connecticut. A lot of towns in Fairfield County got a little bit off their rocker on that. Um, they just felt like it was, um, a bridge too far for them. So, what this committee proposed is that they kinda split the baby. They said, "Go ahead and put that law through, but there'll be an opt-out. If the towns choose to opt-out, they can opt-out of that." Um, something along those lines. Um, another recommendation was to allow municipalities to utilize automated, automated traffic enforcement technology and increase funding for sidewalks and bike paths to help ensure pedestrian safety. So I will tell you that in our subcommittee, which includes public safety, we talked about automated traffic enforcement. And while many communities do have it, which is basically cameras that can ticket you or see you going through, um, there are many communities that feel that is a bit of an invasion of privacy, number one, and number two, they feel like it unfairly targets certain folks, certain minorities, I guess, um, or that there's a watchful eye out there. So we stayed away from it in public safety. So this was kinda interesting to see it come up here. Trust me, when it's before the full membership, that will catch a lot of eyes. I don't think that'll go through. Um, and, uh, the other recommendation was to increase workforce housing through tax credits, brownfield restoration tax credits, and local, local option property tax exemption. Um, I'm just giving you a quick rundown. Uh, Municipal Law and Labor Relations, uh, recommended that, and I see Eric O'Connell is on from the Harbor News. Uh, this is one that CCM has been pushing forever, and that is to allow all legal notices to be published on town websites and not have an obligation that they be published in a newspaper. Uh, also to increase the prevailing wage threshold for renovation projects to, uh, 500,000 from 100,000. Um, several years ago, they increased new construction prevailing wage thresholds from 500,000 to 1 million. Uh, this recommends, they never touched the renovation, so anything over 100,000 must meet prevailing wage threshold, uh, prevailing wage wages. Uh, and we're asking, and that it go to 500,000. Um, I don't know about that. Um, those two issues, by the way, have been kicked around for years and years and years and years, and there's very little headway made. Um, the other one is shared services. Um, shared services is a big deal. Right now, one of, uh, one of the critical issues that the state, that many municipalities are facing in the state, there are not many building officials or fire marshals out there. So, shared services is to allow towns to share a fire marshal or a building official. Um, right now, you cannot do that without, uh, I think it goes against state law, that you have to have a building official for every town. And fire marshals, and also, and this is very, there's just, the, the pipeline is not there for these types of positions, very hard to find. So, um, we've talked about this for a couple of years at CCM now, so it's to allow, uh, that municipalities can share services. It's a little bit more than that, but to allow municipalities to better share services. Um, and the last one, which I was on, um, we talked about volunteer firefighters. We happen to have a very robust department, but there are many departments around us, as you guys both know, that struggle to get volunteer firefighters. Um, so, um, we talked about setting up a task force to look at, to make sure that towns are providing an appropriate income tax credit, which we do. Uh, developing a pipeline from colleges and universities into fire marshal, building official, and volunteer, and, and to educate people on being a volunteer firefighter, offering tuition incentives for volunteers, streamlining certification and recertification for firefighters and EMTs. It's not uncommon for professional firefighters to be volunteer firefighters in other communities. Um, and also, the training schools for the firefighters are not adequately funded. So to provide for sustainable and consistent state-supported funding for training. Um, the next issue was a mental health services, uh, recommendation that when you have a repeated, when you have a repeated, uh, emergency room, I'll just call it an addict, essentially, who basically comes in nearly dead and then gets a Narcan shot and ends up in the ER 24 hours later. Same thing, and that happens. And I'm not, not to, to get these people more help, that's the recommendation, to try to be able to hold these people and get someone to look at them and say, "This person should be involuntarily helped for 24 hours or 48 hours, so that maybe they can get in a pipeline to a better path." So other states around us do this, Connecticut does not at the moment. And then the other one, the last, uh, recommendation we had was school security. Basically, to, uh, enhance the school security grant program to allow municipalities to appropriately provide SROs or armed security guards in schools. And also to have the state provide best practices. Um, you know, we have 169 pounds in the state of Connecticut, and with regard to this issue, I'm not so sure if there is a best practices manual for every town. And it just seems like, oh, Westbrook might do one thing, Old Saver can another, Ridgefield might do another, and Manchester might do another, and, um, it's not so much whether it should be an SRO or an armed security guard, it's more, is there a best practices for how they should be in the school, what they should be doing, and things like that. So, um, I'm not asking for a lot of comment on that, I'm happy to share that with you. It was discussed in open session today, CCM Legislative Committee meeting. Um, those were not final recommendations, the final recommendations will be made, um, before too long. And, um, I've made it the next meeting. Yeah, one, oh. Uh, all right, so, so now, those are my comments. Uh, the one thing I do wanna add to the agenda, oh, why don't, okay, why don't we, unless there's further comment or questions, I'm gonna move on, okay? Uh, I'll move the approval of the minutes from September 13th, 2022. Second. Um, any comments or questions on those? Are there none of those in favor, Super Five is saying aye.
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 Then on the special board meeting, which basically just put the town meeting for tomorrow night instead of last night, uh, I'll move their approval, is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
This was a, a draft agenda that Ellen gave me, uh, Ellen, Jesus, George Jan gave me. Uh, and that's why it said discussion and possible action, but it didn't say anything. And, um, so, uh, one of the things I wanna do is, um, add to the agenda, add to the agenda, discussion and possible action on the endorsement of an application by the town to apply for the Community Challenge Grant and to commit to, and have this board commit to a $500,000 recommendation towards said project to the Board of Finance. So that would just be an agenda item, and I'm looking, I'll make that motion. I'll second that. Um, discussion on adding that to the agenda, Matt?
I, I guess I'm confused, because I thought that was on the agenda that we got, but.
Is it? I thought I saw it also. You know what, I'm looking at an old agenda, and I apologize.
Okay.
What is the agenda saying, Matt?
The, the agenda says exactly what you said, it says, "The first item for business before the board was discussion and possible action on the endorsement of the application for Community Challenge Grants and authorization for the first." And authorization for the first selectment to sign any documents associated therewithin. We didn't have the specifications around the amounts of money we were requesting.
Alright, very good. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at an old.
All good.
Alright, so uh, so it's on the agenda, so we don't need to add it to the agenda. So I'll withdraw my motion. Scott will draw the second. So I know, uh, Matt, you're, you know very well about the Community Challenge Grant. And you know that we applied last year and we didn't get it. Um. So uh, several months ago, um, when these. Grants were announced that they were coming out. Um, Chris Costa, Jennifer Donahue and I, uh, and you know, we, we sought input from a few other people in Town Hall. Uh, basically said, what are the problem spots in town? Uh, and we came up with basically two or three. But you have to be able to work with the property owner. To do this grant. Uh, and one of the properties where we brought in the property owner. Uh, the property owner clearly had no um, strong desire to work with the town. This is a partnership. This Community Challenge Grant is a partnership. With the private property owner and the town in applying for the grant. Um, I think it's just, that's what it is. It, it's a partnership in another name because there's no legal document, but that's what it is. So the other property we came up with was Dock and Dine. Dock and Dine has been vacant for ten years. Um, and so we called uh, the owner of the property, John Kadama. This goes back, like I said, we're in September now, this is probably in um. July, maybe, we called John Kadama in and we basically said, uh, we have this opportunity for a Community Challenge Grant. And by the way, uh, there's fifty-six million dollars allocated toward this round of grants. I think I have that right. And twenty-eight million is slated to go towards. Uh, I think distressed or underserved communities. Um. I think that's the language and twenty-eight million will be allocated otherwise to other communities. Um. So uh, we called Mr. Kadama and it said there is money available. And um, we didn't talk exact numbers at that point, but I think. I always thought it was a fair amount of money for the town to put up a half a million bucks. I don't think it's too much. I don't think it's too little. I think it shows that the town is serious. Um, and uh, we mentioned that to Mr. Kadama and the, the town would not be building a restaurant. The town would be fixing the seawall. Um, the town would be installing a sidewalk, which would be public access. Um, and the public access we are looking for is a six-foot permanent easement. Across Mr. Kadama's property. Uh, and that easement would connect to Gardener's Park and it would connect to Mini Golf. Um, the walkway on, the walkway at Sabre Point Inn is actually a public walkway going through Sabre Point. A lot of people may not know that, but it's on our, Jeff Jacobson, we, we met the other day. And he showed me the original plans and I believe that's a public walkway. And then you would come out of Sabre Point and you walk along South Cove and you can walk all the way to Fenwick, of course. Um, and it would be one of, probably one of the longest and one of the prettiest river walks. Uh, you know, certainly on the shoreline and um, and. Well, there's not many towns on the shoreline uh, that are on the river, but. Uh, in Long Island Sound or on the river, one of the longest walkways. And um, it secures permanent access to the public for that. Um, in addition to that. Uh, there's a deck, not a dock, a deck. That is built there and uh, there would also be public access to that deck. Uh, the docks are a different discussion that um, we're not looking for control of the docks right now. That is a, the timeline was too tight. And the Harbor Management Commission would have to weigh in on that. They would probably largely fund that. So I don't want to speak for another commission right now. Um, I'm not saying that those docks wouldn't be transient docks down the road. Maybe town of Old Sabre transient docks, but um, I want to leave that be for now. Right now, we're simply talking about. The seawall, repairing the seawall, um. Permanent public access along a six-foot, so six-foot easement and permanent access to the deck. Uh, but the deck needs repairs too. And we're getting a quote on that. Um. So uh, Mr. Mr. Kadama would be pledging. Um, at least three million dollars. And we would be asking the state to match those funds at three and a half million dollars. So all in all, a seven million dollar project um, at this point. So. I want, first, first off, this is simply a grant application. We don't have the money. So I don't want people to run around and say, oh my God, Dock and Dine is coming back. And it would be for an indoor restaurant. This is for an indoor restaurant, a twelve-month-a-year restaurant. This is not for a six-month restaurant where. Uh, the property is vacant for six months and active for six months. Uh, we do not have the money yet. It is possible the state will not match three and a half million. Um, at which point there'll be a decision tree, I think, for everybody. Uh, does the town still want to proceed with a permanent ease? Does Mr. Kadama have other funding available? I don't know. Uh, but um, for now, it is a all-in seven million dollar grant. Um, that we would go for. Um. As I said, these discussions have been going on for a while and. Honestly, it kind of didn't get completely real until last week. So that's more why we're coming now and we weren't coming two months ago. Uh, I want to be very clear about something else. The property is not for sale. So I talked to someone recently, just yesterday, to inform them of this. And they said, well, what's getting, does that mean the town's acquisition of the property is off the table? To which my response was, there was never an acquisition by the town. Uh, the property is not for sale. However, the town has indicated it would like to buy the property. But Mr. Kadama has shunned all those offers. So. So what do we do? Do we sit there and play poker with the property owner? It's been ten years, or do we try to jointly develop the property? And make this a destination for the state of Connecticut, not just for the town of Old Sabre. Uh, making an indoor restaurant. Um, in a show of good faith. Mr. Kadama has agreed to withdraw his Smoke on Water application. Which would have been lengthy, somewhat controversial. Um, and I'm not even sure if it was approved, it would get built in two thousand twenty-three. I am not taking a position on whether Smoke on the Water was a good or a bad project. I'm simply stating what I think is obvious, that it would have been a rather, it was going to cause some. Controversy in the community, certainly some excitement in the community. I'm not saying that either. Um, but in a show of good faith, they are withdrawing their application. And uh, going full steam on this grant, which would uh, result in a. Indoor restaurant. There of course would be outdoor seating. Every restaurant is entitled to that if they have the room. But that is controlled by the zoning commission through a special permit. So it is, this will not be Smoke on the Water with an indoor restaurant. It won't be. It will be an indoor restaurant. With a certain number of approved seats by the zoning commission through a special permit. Um. I've reached out to uh. I've reached out to our legislative delegation. I've reached out to Paul Formica, Senator Paul Formica. Senator Norm Needleman and State Representative, Representative Devin Carney. I asked them for a letter of support. Um, all of them enthusiastically responded. So we anticipate. Writing a joint letter for our legislative delegation to submit with our application, which I think is uh, strong. In addition, um, and this is my final comment and uh, in this, and at least for me. Um, this will be a, a bit of an economic generator for the town, um, certainly in construction. Uh, if we get that far and then in permanent jobs uh, at Dock and Dine. Um. I think we've all been a little disheartened at what's transpired down there for the last ten years. And um, we have an opportunity, I think, to. Do exactly what this grant says, transform a property through a public-private partnership. Um, and I'd like uh, the board's endorsement. Uh, so that we can move forward with the application. Obviously, if there's a no vote here, I think it stops. So with that. Die, uh, monologue, I'll, I'll, I'm happy to have a discussion. And I, I know, Matt, you had some awareness of this.
Yeah, I had some awareness and you know, very familiar with the Communities Challenge Grant. So that's. That's my first question is, because I just don't remember the ratios. I know that there's a required. Ratio in terms of municipal dollars. And I, I just want to make sure that we are at that threshold or above it. I don't know if Jennifer is here.
Is, is Jennifer, are you available for two minutes? Or a girl?
And Carl, can, while we're waiting for Jennifer in that question, can you, oh, and there she is, say. Hey, Jennifer, so the question I had was, I know that there was a required ratio. For municipalities in terms of how much dollars they're putting in for Communities Challenge, if there was a disadvantaged community or a regular. Um, municipality, are we with five hundred thousand, are we at or above our required threshold?
So uh, disadvantage is twenty-five percent. Um, we don't fall into that, obviously. So we're fifty percent. And so with the amount of money that the town's gonna put in, plus what our partner is gonna put in, we are at fifty percent.
Great, and town and developer match count the same in terms of being on the same side of that equation?
Um, it's not specified.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know for sure, but I can certainly clarify that. And we haven't, we haven't worked out every number yet, but this is, you know, our working numbers right now.
Mm-hmm. And then I guess, like, just Carl and Jennifer talking this through, like, so worse, just to be devil's advocate, worst case scenario. We, we put this, we put this together and we invest five hundred thousand of town money. And three million of the private party's money. We get the match, seven million dollars goes to create this Riverwalk for us. And repair this.
Not seven million for the Riverwalk.
No, not for the Riverwalk, yeah. But I mean, in terms of what we end up with an asset, at the end of the day, like if the, basically, I'm jumping to say. If we don't see a restaurant get built, because that's not part of the scope, right? Right now, we're, the scope of the seven million, that's not going to build the actual restaurant.
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay, I missed that. In the monologue, I missed that.
Yeah.
So we'll have a restaurant and then we'll have the Riverwalk. The revitalized decking area, the fixed seawall.
Seawall. Oh, great. I'm, I missed completely. Sorry about that.
Say it's a twelve-month-a-year, I think I did say.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, establishment, not a six-month-a-year, but yeah, so uh, look. Is that enough? Um, it's close. Um, he's. You know, he, I would hope would have some other funding if he needed it. Um. You know, in the past, I think he anticipated a five or six million dollar project.
Mm-hmm.
And he was looking for approvals on it, uh, but some of his funding fell through. Um, so, you know, I'm hopeful that if. Another half million were needed on his end, that he would have access to it, and my guess is he probably would to make this happen.
Okay. And do we have uh, uh, anything in writing from Mr. Kadama? To, that he's pledging this, just in case we get the word and then he changes his mind?
It is a requirement of the. That was one of the holdups. Uh, that's why we really didn't want to come public with this until that was in hand.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
That's a good question.
Yes, yeah, that. We, believe me, and that's what's putting a little pressure on Jennifer is, we could start preparing this two weeks ago. And we didn't really get that document until last Thursday, I think. Um, so. This is a deadline, so I, as Jennifer explained it to me, Monday, we let the state know that we're applying and Friday is submission. Is that correct?
Well, we can, I think, at any time.
Submit.
The third is the deadline for getting the special code to apply. I could do it now. I just hadn't done it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and then the seventh is the actual deadline to file your, file your papers.
Okay. I have. I don't have any more questions about it. I mean, you know, I guess just speaking to it, it is a. Prime piece of real estate, you know, that is really unique in terms of the whole state, as you said. It's at the mouth of the Connecticut River and Long Island Sound, you know, there's not a piece of property. In Old Lime that sits, you know, right across in the exact same way. This has been, you know, a commercial site for the community for a long time and. I remember when I was a kid living in Middletown, it was one of the first places that I remember coming down to was Sabre Point. Um, you know, with my parents to see this and to go eat lunch at Dock and Dine. So I know it draws visitors here. Um, and, and think it's a, a great opportunity uh, to, to invest in our community, so.
And yeah, invest in our community and create, I think, incredible public access and safe. Uh, it is not safe down there right now.
Yeah, correct.
It is not safe, so. Um, well, I think for, uh, Jennifer, do you have anything? I know you weren't here for the whole discussion. I kind of went through. Oh, you know, my thoughts on it and how we came here and. Um, if you want to, I don't know if you want to discuss anything else, what you're working on with it.
Um, I mean, just trying to put all the pieces together.
Yeah, we still need.
There's a lot of moving parts.
We, yeah, we still, yeah, we're still working on pieces. So I met with uh, a, a construction company last. Wednesday, Chris Costa and I did, uh, that builds seawalls, that does seawalls. And it's a company that actually did. Five out of the six seawalls after uh, uh. Not Irene, Sandy in Cornfield Point. Um, so I contacted them, uh, we, they've done other jobs for us, this company in town. And they, they were willing to come out and meet with us at no cost, of course. They're, they're a great organization. And um, they were happy to put something on paper. So we anticipate getting a seawall repair across from them. They were not, they looked at the seawall and he's like, this is not a hard fix. This is. You know, they fix these things is, they pump cement behind the wall. That's what they do. They drill a hole and they pump cement until the cement comes out into the water. It's basically what they do. Um, they also, they did talk about. Um. Fixing a little bit of the revetment, so in other words, instead of having the waves crash against a. Vertical wall, that would crash against rocks that might be going out into the water. So they break out here first. Instead of just crashing into the wall. Uh, so they talked a little bit about that and that is present in certain places. At, on the seawall, but not in other places. Um, so they're gonna look at that. Uh, we have someone looking at the deck.
Yep.
Is he gonna do that? Yep. So Jennifer already talked to somebody today. I mean, we're still working on this today, trying to get some numbers. Um, but we'll have them. But we'll have them. And Mr. Kadama has work to do. And his attorney, they have work to do too. And, you know, but they're, you know, as much as I can tell, they're in, you know, and, and this is, you know, it, look. You know, I mean, look, the, I've already identified, I think, with what some, some will say. And I mean, to be fair, why doesn't the town own it? Why won't the town buy it? That's number one. And another fair comment, and I, not that people are going to think of this, but I'm going to say it. If Smoke on the Water was successful, the zoning commission may have required them to build a walkway across the property that was public access. However, if Smoke on the Water were approved, it'd be a six-month operation. And there'd be a lot of, some unhappy people, some happy, some unhappy in the community. I think this kind of restores more of what was there and what this community has always loved down there. So I, I, you know, look, I don't know if we'll get the money. I don't know if we'll get any money, all of it, part of it. It, 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 it just seems to really land on all fours with regard to transform the challenge grant. I don't know. What do you think?
I hope so.
And I want to thank Jennifer. She's really, she was rolling her eyes last week, like, is this really going to happen? Because if it is. And, and I, what I, I'm gonna offer a compliment. Jennifer is such a good writer. She's an excellent writer and a very smart person that she's thought of a lot of things that some of us didn't think of that will end up in the grant. Jeff Jacobson is, you know, doing a lot of work on this right now too. Does it require a lot of engineering? It basically requires a drawing and some landscaping and so, you know, it's not a lot of input from the engineer, but it's some. And it's a construction cost estimate of the sidewalk. So anyway, that's that.
Is, is Mr. Kadama going to be able to get some sort of conceptual rendering, you know, from an architect of what a, what a structure and landscaping would look like there? Because that would be, I'm sure, an attractive feature of an application.
We definitely, we already have a, a pretty solid building plan from them.
Okay.
You know, that may not be the hundred percent exact sign, but it's very complete, high-quality. Yeah, so we have that to submit already. That was one of the reasons we were able to even consider this because he already had that in the hopper. Otherwise, I, I don't think we could have done it.
Right. Because I know that they, you know, anything that makes the project seem present as more shovel-ready, you know, definitely aids in this grant. So.
I mean, we're going to include landscaping in our conceptual part. But I don't know. I need to check with them if they are going to be able to have that piece, but.
Okay. So I mean, I, I'll make a motion to support submitting a community challenge grant and allowing the first selectmen to, you know, sign any documents as required and, and also to request that, or to allow the town to submit up to five hundred thousand dollars and make that request to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I'll second that. Okay. And I know, I mean, technically, I suppose the discussion should happen after the motion, but. All right, any further comment on this? All right. So we'll let you know when that, well, I, if it's a electronic document, we'll share it with you when it's submitted. So. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Right. Now you really have to do it. So one of, the last item is the ARB. So we had a an alternate who became a regular member, but the regular member would like to remain an alternate, and that's Kate Calderella. And after our last meeting, she contacted me and said, why wasn't I, you know, she really does want to stay on and stay involved, but she was happy to give up her regular membership. So I'm going to move Kate as an alternate. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the, is the ARB committee on the agenda?
It says canceled.
It does say canceled. Okay.
Yep.
It was a meeting Thursday. That's it. All I got. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. All right.